We're gonna call me the order, would you please rise for the buzzer to lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Sure. Councilmember Shakur.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gurneo.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Andrew McGuire, town attorneys present remotely.
Okay, introduction, presentations, and proclamations. Presentation from Gary Beverley regarding the proposed Upper Verde, Wild, and Scenic River UV WSR. Gary.
Mayor Miller in council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this fine evening. So, my name's Gary Beverley. You may know me more for my work with the Citizens Water Agency, but I have, I'm wearing a different hat today. I'm wearing a Sierra Club hat. I'm chair of the Yavapai group, the Sierra Club, with eight hundred local members. And I work on the state board of the Sierra Club. And the Sierra Club is really concerned about the Upper Verde River. And that's what I'm here to talk with you about today. So, you know, I moved to Chino Valley in nineteen seventy-four, forty-nine years ago. And I, every time I say that, I go, where did all the time go? Where it went was working like a madman on my contracting business and my retail businesses. And when I sold those in two thousand and six, I took the opportunity to really explore the Upper Verde River. And I found out that this is a little-known and underappreciated river. And it turns out it's one of the major resources for the southwestern United States. It's really important to Chino Valley, but its importance greatly exceeds our local area. So, the photo on the screen is a photo I took on one of my first hikes down the river. And it's very pretty, as you can see. This kind of classic landscape beauty is one of the first things people respond to on the river. But there's much, much more to it. And over the years, as I've studied this river and learned more about it, it's, it rises to the point where it deserves national recognition. And that's what this Wild and Scenic River proclamation is about. So, let me tell you a little bit about the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. So, this is the highest form of federal protection for rivers. It needs approval by the US Congress and President. And what it does is it protects free-flowing rivers that have outstandingly remarkable values. And we're gonna use the acronym ORVs to reduce that mouthful. And I'll talk more about those later in the program. National Wild and Scenic Rivers Act was passed in nineteen sixty-eight, signed by President Nixon. There's two-hundred-and-twenty-six river segments in the US and over thirteen thousand river miles are protected. So, this is not an uncommon or unusual program. It's well-used and common. So, how does it protect rivers? Number one, it protects the free-flowing character. In this case, it'd be preventing large federal dam and projects. Not too worried about that in the Verde. There's really not that much water there to justify a billion-dollar dam. Okay, thanks. Can you still hear me fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. It creates a Federal Reserve water right. So, that's part of the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. And of course, that's a point that is of great concern to many people. So, I want to spend a few minutes later in the presentation digging into that just a little bit. It ensures that the water quality in the river is maintained or enhanced. Now, Sierra Club's been doing water quality monitoring on the upper river for fifteen years, every two months. And the river, water quality is very good. The Verde's in good shape now. And we want to keep it that way with this designation. So, the river water quality meets the Clean Water Act standards for body contact. The act requires that a comprehensive river management plan be developed. And Prescott National Forest would be the administering agency for this. And they would, this management plan is a really interesting thing because the act requires community participation in developing this plan. So, this becomes a community plan. It's not some edict from the federal government on high slamming us with their requirements. This is something that we participate in, and this becomes a community river. The task for that management plan is to protect the outstanding remarkable values. So, in this case, it'd be things like the cultural values, the scenery, the geology, the botanic resources, the wildlife, the fishery resources. So, it has to protect or enhance those ORVs. Those ORVs are selected to be the unique values for this river. So, this management plan is customized to reflect the values of this, our local river. And it's customized to meet the requirements of the citizens. So, this is really kind of unusual for federal land protection. Many protection systems aren't like this. But this is tuned up to our needs and our river. So, that's a big plus. So, the group of people that's working on this is, the Yavapai Apache Nation is really strongly in favor of this. Nationals Conservation Groups here, the Sierra Club, American Rivers, American White Water Wilderness Society, Defenders of Wildlife, Pew Memorial Trust, are all national organizations that are behind this effort. And they've designated this as one of the highest priority projects in the southwest. Statewide organizations would be Arizona Wildlife Federation, Friends of the Verde, C-WAG, Natural History Institute. Verde Adventures there is a private business in the Verde Valley who's a member of our team. So, we have a broad base of support. There's citizens on the team also. We have a broad group of people working on this. What we're doing is, first of all, we're building community support, and that's why we're here. We have letters of support from over a hundred and thirty businesses in Flagstaff, in the Verde Valley, and in West Yavapai County. These businesses believe that Wild and Scenic River is good for business, and they support it. Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce supports it. We are continuing to get more letters of business support because we think the economic case for this is really important. Terms of government support, the cities of, in Sedona, in the Verde Valley, the cities of Sedona, Camp Verde, Cottonwood, and Clarkdale have all signed letters of support. In West Yavapai County, Prescott Valley, and Prescott, and the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors have signed letters of support. And so, we're coming to the Chino Council to ask you to also give a letter of support. And I'm not coming to you last because you don't matter. I'm coming to you last because you're the most important, right? So, we approached the Arizona Congressional Delegation in March. We, a group of us went to Washington DC and talked to Senator Sinema, Senator Kelly, face-to-face conversations, and talked to Representative Eli Crane, described this project and get their feedback. They're all very interested, and Senator Kelly in particular is extremely supportive of this. So, we thought that that lobbying effort went as better than we expected. And as a whole, all our community outreach and contacts have been extremely favorable. We have yet to encounter any significant pushback. That's because the Verde River, if the authors of the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act had a river in mind when they wrote that act, it could have been the Verde. This river qualifies just perfectly and exactly. We're gonna continue community outreach and try and introduce legislation in the fall. In terms of agency support, Prescott National Forest is strongly in favor of this. The forest supervisor is strongly in favor of this. Region three of the forest is favorable. So, everything looks really good at this point. We're now going to individual community meetings in communities around northern Arizona. So, we have a lot of work to do to finish making a really strong case of support. This is the proposal. As you can see, it starts over here. Can you see the cursor on the screen? And that'd be at the old Highway eighty-nine bridge at Sullivan Lake, and continues down the river. This is all Prescott National Forest territory. There's one mile out of seventy-five is private property on this whole thing. There's very little private property. And it extends down to the southeastern boundary of Prescott National Forest above Clarkdale. And it includes Sycamore Creek, so it's a total of seventy-four river miles. So, this is a proposal. It says draft proposal. It's like, this is what we show people, and we ask for their input. If people have concerns, we'll address those and work with them. This, for this to be successful, it has to meet the needs of all the communities here. So, feedback and questions are welcome. I want to deal with some of the common objections that people have. So, many people are immediately concerned that this is gonna restrict access to the river for recreation or for hunting and fishing. No way. Not even close. As a matter of fact, it will improve public access. In terms of land use, the Wild and Scenic River Act creates no requirement. It creates no authority even to acquire, regulate, or zone private land. Prescott Forest is the manager. Cannot go to a private property owner and say, you need to do this to protect the river. Just, they don't have the authority to do that according to the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. No interference then with private land, private property, or access. No restriction on hunting, fishing, and recreational activities. Then we get to the water rights part. This is also a common thing, especially in this area. So, the river will, upon designation, there is created a Federal Reserve in-stream flow right. That right is administered by the state. You know, the federal government doesn't administer water. They have reserved that ability for all the states to manage their own water resources. So, the federal rights are in line with all the other water rights claimants, and that's then all administered by Department of Water Resources. So, this water right that the Wild and Scenic River could get would be, would have a priority date that would be the date that Congress designated it. Well, the thing is, is that there are already existing in-stream flow rights on the river held by Prescott Forest, or by Arizona Department of Game and Fish, by Coquenino National Forest, that predate this. And so, those rights would be controlling, and there's no additional liability or effect from this Wild and Scenic designation. So, you know, the point of doing this Wild and Scenic is not to solve the water rights problem. We all know that the Verde's threatened, and the threat is groundwater pumping in the Big Chino. The Wild and Scenic designation doesn't reach up in there. It doesn't cover anything out of the boundaries. The purpose of this is not to solve, the, thanks. The purpose of this is not to solve some really knotty water problems that we really need to work on and resolve. So, you know, this designation would not guarantee a flow in the river. It doesn't confer any new ownership of water. It's limited in quantity. Those rights cannot be sold or transferred. That water has to stay in the riverbed. So, there's no negative effect on existing water rights as a result of this designation. So, the outstanding and remarkable values, these are the six that were identified by Prescott Forest. You know, the cultural values are just really strong and very, very important to the Yavapai Apache Nation. Recreational access would be maintained or improved. And the wildlife and fisheries would be similarly maintained or improved. So, the thrust of this is to take the river as it is now and make it better in these respects. So, non-degradation or improvement is the requirement. So, I could talk for hours about these outstanding remarkable values, but I've got a sheet here that kind of explains some of this.
We got it.
This is a new one. This is eleven reasons. And so, I'm not gonna dig into this here for you. I wanna wind this up immediately. And, but there's just, these outstanding remarkable values are off the charts for this river. This is really important for the citizens in Chino, for the businesses in Chino, for the wildlife, for our recreation, for our quality life. This is just a win-win. I don't see a downside in any way. So, I'm asking you to support this by issuing a letter of support. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
All right, thank you. Any question? Yeah, go.
Hi. Could you just give me a summary real quick? Like, if this were to be approved at the federal level, what is like the first two, three, or three things that you would do to protect the river? That's where my disconnect is, is I appreciate and I'm a hundred percent in support of it, but what are the plans to protect the river, so to speak, and improve those roadways?
Right. So, the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act requires Prescott Forest to complete a management plan within three years after designation. So, that is job one.
Okay.
Talking with Dale Dieter, the supervisor of the forest, he says, we'll have that done in eighteen months. I want to get this done. So, that's the first thing to do. The management plan then reflects the concerns and priorities of the community. And so, that's where the decisions about the first three things, the most important three things are made. And so, I don't want to get ahead of that process, you know, but it will maintain or improve the river.
Okay, best, your best wishes, your dream, not committing, just what would you like to see?
I would like to see better recreational access on the river so that people can enjoy it. You know, the Sierra Club found out long ago that if people don't, aren't able to enjoy a resource, they're not willing to protect it. And so, I think that improving public access for responsible users, that's a really important point. For responsible users is, to me, that's job one. If we can just leave the river be, it will be fine. It will, it heals itself. The river is in good ecological shape right now. We just need to not foul it up.
Okay.
Is that answer?
Yes. How is this going to protect the water levels from dropping? That's what, on your PowerPoint presentation, I'm not sure if it's in one of these pamphlets.
Well, it won't.
Okay, but there was a, on one of the screens, there was a, that was a risk of not doing this, would be the dropping of the water.
The threat to the Verde water, to the Verde flow, if, no water, no river, right? So, Verde Springs is the main source of flow for the upper twenty-five miles. And, you know, that Verde Springs has been losing flow since about the mid-nineties, and now it's about half of what it was then. So, we are in a degraded state, and the river is now in a very vulnerable state. Much of that decline is a result of increasing temperatures and this drought that we've been in. Groundwater pumping also plays a role. Wild and Scenic Designation is not gonna solve the water problem. This is one step on the way to protecting the river. To really protect this river, we need to deal with groundwater pumping threats in the Big Chino. That's why I work with C-WAG and to do that. So, it's a two-pronged approach. The Wild and Scenic is not a silver bullet solution.
Now, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Bob? How about down here, you anything? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will, we will look into your letter of support and see if we can get that worked up, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, item three, call to public.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions among our audience. Mayor, I do have one comment card from Mr. John Garden.
John Garden, Chino Valley.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, I wanted to address affordable housing in the town of Chino Valley. That, I'm just asking the board in the future if they look at any, any kind of project like, well, we used to call it, back in the day, it was low-income housing, but now they call it affordable housing. I guess it's just more palatable. It's not a new concept. I mean, I grew up in and around it. And it's just been my expertise growing, growing up in and around affordable housing that not just the neighborhoods that affordable housing comes into, but the neighborhoods surrounding it. It seems like the quality of life over a period of time just seems to go down. So, I'm just asking the board, because I know, what is it, CCNJ Coalition for Compassion and Justice? I know they're looking at maybe trying to build a project like that out here. I mean, I know they're calling it affordable housing, but it's just, it's like we used to call, what was it, global warming, and now it's climate change because it's more palatable. So, I'm just asking the board to do their homework and maybe do a little research and a little background on neighborhoods where they brought affordable housing into a neighborhood. And the neighborhoods just seem to decline after that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, that was all I had.
Okay. We'll move on. Current events summaries and reports, status reports by mayor and council regarding current events. I'll let you go first, and then I'll do, say what I want to say.
Okay. Last week, attended the hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of the Rough Riders down at the Prescott Square by the courthouse. Very nice presentation put on. Rees were laid, Supervisor Brown, Mayor Phil Good, both presented wreaths along with the Scottish-American War veterans. Very nice little ceremony, and probably ought to be done more than often than a hundred-and-twenty-five years apart.
Is it House Bill?
Oh, House Bill twenty-five forty-three, the section of it that applied to Chino Valley. The improvements of eighty-nine from Road Three to Road Four, and from Road Four to Road Five, including a roundabout at Road Five, did not make it onto the tentative budget. It's possible that it could make it onto the regular budget, but those chances, as I put it, are about the same as me being the next pope.
And what I want to do, Tom, was thank you for, I know you've made several trips to Phoenix and spoke to both the House and Senate and all the other powers, and I appreciate you doing that.
Certainly, not a problem.
Okay. Bob, got anything? Annie?
Oh, I do.
Go ahead.
I'm so excited. Okay, the downside of that, of Councilmember Armstrong. The trust for public lands, seven million dollars was put in the budget for the state park at Del Rio Springs to preserve the Verde River waterway. And it is going to be great, great, great drive of revenue for a state park for our area. And Senator Sinema's office has also committed two million dollars. So, that is extremely exciting, extremely exciting to have a state park. And also, May is Law Enforcement Appreciation Month. Law enforcement officers put their lives on the line every day to keep people safe throughout the month of May. Make sure you thank the law enforcement officials in your community for all you do. Thank you. And last but not least, it's the end of the school year. Kids are gonna be out. Parents are going crazy. Graduation is in two weeks. Have little grace with us, but please watch out for kids because it's about to be summer. And that's all I have.
Thank you. John? Sir. Mrs. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Just a couple of things. The PD Dodgeball against our eighth graders is about to happen again this year at the Heritage Middle School. That's Tuesday, May eighteenth, from one to three. It's a great time if anyone has the opportunity to come out. It's really, it's wonderful to see our PD interacting with our youth. And it's really a great thing for our community.
May eighteenth is not a Tuesday, is it?
It's a Thursday.
Oh.
Thursday, May eighteenth.
Never mind, Thursday, following my notes, yeah. Golden Age and Glamour Senior Prom at the Senior Center. So, it's a new event that's going on. It's really exciting. So, May nineteenth, from six to nine, check out our website to get more information on that. And I would also like to thank Councilmember Armstrong for all the work he did on the state Highway Eight-nine and trying to get funding for that. It was a lot of work, and he kept us informed. And I'm hoping that all that work, although may not pay off this year, will pay off in the future. And also to Representative Bliss, she did send her apologies. She worked really hard to try to get that in the budget. And she's gonna continue to work for us on that. And last but not least, the elevator did arrive for the PD building today. So, yes, it's wonderful. So, there's gonna be a lot of work that has to go into getting that thing in now. And so, that'll take the next couple of weeks to do, then there'll be some other things that need to go on before we can get into the building. So, we're looking somewhere in June to be in the building. So, that's our goal. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, all those items below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anybody want to pull the thing on my rack?
I would like to pull item D, please.
Item D is in dog?
V is in dog.
Okay. Bob, you good down there?
I'm good.
Okay, how about over here?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll do, who's gonna do the motion? I guess you're up to the motion.
Make a motion that we remove item D, consideration of possible action to authorize the town manager to sign the written authorization for I-COR Airsoft LLC to erect additional buildings on-site as required in the lease agreement to being open for discussion.
Okay, we're gonna approve the rest after what that was. Okay. Motion made?
Do we need a formal motion?
Yeah, can we clarify that we're going to approve all remaining consent agenda items?
I make a second motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, and G.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna talk about consideration and possible action to authorize the town to sign the written authorization for I-COR Airsoft LLC to erect additional buildings on-site as required in the lease agreement. Annie?
Hi. Erin, could you pull up on the screen the I-COR Airsoft? And if you guys want to come forward, this is not bad. I just, it's just a discussion.
Councilmember Perkins, are you talking about the actual written authorization? Is that what you're wanting, or just the?
This is fine.
Okay.
Hi. You guys are moving to Chino.
Hi, guys. Yes, about two years ahead of schedule. We're so excited.
That is awesome.
So excited.
Here's my ask. I know, right? There's been some complaints about the weeds.
The weeds?
Yes.
Like specifically? Were we supposed to be mowing the entire property?
Along the roadways?
Oh.
About that area?
Okay.
Cleaned up?
I will take care of that. Sorry?
No, no sorry needed. No sorry needed. I'm very excited that this is working out for you guys, and it'll help us with tax revenue also. My second ask, any way we can paint the trailer?
Ooh.
To make it maybe fit in.
A little less sad.
A little less.
I think we can make that happen, yeah.
That would be amazing. That would be amazing. Thank you.
You bet.
I'm so happy. Thank you for coming, Chino.
Of course. I have info if you guys want it, or if you had any other questions.
That's my job. That's my job. Any question? How about over here? Any, okay, there's no other questions.
You can give those to Erin, she'll give them to us.
Erin will give them to us. Annie, you want to make a motion, please?
I will make a motion. We approve consent agenda item D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We entertain a motion to enter into executive session. You want to do it?
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session.
That's not what this one says.
No, you got it differently. I was gonna get out of this and then go to that.
Okay.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
You want to adjourn this meeting, Mayor Miller? Would you like to adjourn this regular meeting?
Isn't that what we ju, oh.
No.
Do we have to adjourn this one?
Yeah, you can just adjourn it, but.
Okay, Sherry?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor? We're adjourned.